The meeting order. Please rise and face the plane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, purr me by the head, please. We welcome you today, Holy Spirit, into our hearts. We pray that you dwell in our hearts forever and guide us, and intercepts our thoughts, our minds, and our attitudes to the will of God, enable us to do his will all the days of our life. With your presence in our life, may we please God in all we say and do at this meeting. In your name we pray. Amen. Reading and approval of minutes from July one, please. Move to approve. It's a standing. Motion by Stern, second. Second. By Folkerts. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No, thank you. Approval of the agenda, please. Any changes or additions? Motion by Stern to approve the agenda. Second by Folkerts. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Weidrich will be here just around late. He's probably, I'm sure he's in the mood right now, but. Engine is report, let's just go through that, I guess he'll be here. Do you, on a report, they've got email. instructions still going on, hopefully they're getting after tomorrow or Monday. Alley work underway. Do you know anything about that?
They started stripping the asphalt down we got the alley.
They did?
Ask doctor this morning. They were getting stage.
Oh, are they taking up to our pile, or is?
I want to throw it, take it over to you, I'm not sure, they didn't say. I'm a kind of.
Doesn't matter, we'll just, we'll take it. Monty, have you heard any feedback through the ladies in the office, smoke letters out about the, about the water meters?
We've had more calls from people who haven't gotten theirs yet. And we've been working with the company as far as getting additional ones sent out. That, or we've just had invited people into the office and we'll help them schedule their appointments. We got the database with all their special codes and everything, so.
One thing you may need to do on that, they don't, they sent it to my physical address and I had to have my neighbor give it to me. It doesn't appear that they're sending any of those out to P O boxes.
No. And we've been readdressing some of those to the P O boxes then, too.
I just got mine last week from my neighbor and it just sounded mentioned that.
I haven't gotten one. It was the same thing. I heard there were a lot of people went down, didn't get them.
I don't have mine either, I got a P O box, so.
I got mine, I asked Wednesday.
Whatever.
Physical address. Do we know anything about quality asphalt, the timeline for the, Monty or Dave?
Nothing with the painting work up there.
Do we, do we know if they're doing other projects, if they're willing to do other projects in town?
The stuff that we had already added to the list, yeah.
But I think, um. Wayne Hopper was thinking of having some work done in his parking lot. I don't know if he has to contact.
You can contact him, correct?
Or.
Contact him, correct?
Any other comments, questions concerning?
If Wayne would be as willing, I do have it.
For quality?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way he can call and get it to him.
All right, let's move down to requests to citizens. Actually, I wanna, I'm gonna, Mr. Bor, you have time to wait.
Thank you.
Okay, I want, I'd like to have Mr. Weidrich care for your discussion, too. Let's go to six B, please. Local permit, rattle for street closure. Period Rose Car Club.
During the Harvest Fest, they always have their car show, they close off Portman 12th Avenue Southwest, they're by Crowsey's. That's what the request is for, and then they also do a fifty-fifty raffle during their show to raise funds for the club, for the different things that they do.
Okay. Does that mean anything unusual, what they've done in the past? Motion to approve. Thank you, motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Six C, amend the street closure permit for touch a truck. Apparently that's blowing up and getting. Just got a lot more people that wanna be involved, which is pretty cool, actually. So they wanna close off and go all the way down to. West Dakota Lumber, you said, Monty?
Yeah.
So West Dakota Lumber to. English Lutheran.
Go, yes, and then from the alley south of Maine to the alley north of Maine. On First Avenue.
Do you have any concerns? Emergency service wise, unless they're firing on Main Street against her.
Yeah. Have to go through the barriers. They always keep a lane open, so if we even am, this far, so it should be fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, we need a motion to amend this permit.
I want a motion to approve the.
Motion by Folkerts. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Let's, let's go with. Mr. Bor. Go ahead, you're up, you're up.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I, on an evening of July second, approximately, I suppose, ten thirty, I had a neighbor that started celebrating the Fourth of July. And they enjoy the Fourth of July.
Sure.
They have a lot of large fireworks. There is nothing small in their selection or their presentation. That went on to a couple minutes after eleven. And that was discharged on the intersection of Second Avenue and Third Street, right in the middle of the intersection. I did have a lot of issue with the night of the second. The night of the third come. Because they had to be done firing per city ordinance by eleven o'clock. The night of the third, Wednesday evening, started about ten thirty, and then went on for a solid hour and a half. Right in the middle of the intersection of Third Street and Second Avenue. I am sorry, I apologize for not bringing part of my visual aid that I have for tonight. I had a bag of used fireworks. Those little plastic things that come out of these large fireworks now that you have no control of where they go. I proceeded to go visit with my neighbor. They were sweeping the street. They swept from the middle of Second Avenue, half a block north of the intersection, a half a block west, a half a block south, and a half a block east, and swept it all up and almost filled a twenty gallon plastic tote with fireworks debris. So I went over, I had my two grandsons with me, my two older grandsons are visiting. And we were gonna head to one of the parks, so they could burn off some energy. And I went over and I visited with my neighbor and I said, wow, I said, last night was too. And he looks at me very confused, I said, it was too loud. It was too close, and it was too long. And he replied immediately and said, but it was legal. Cause it went to, again, a minute or two past midnight, cause that's what our city ordinance says. All right? Okay. So, I have not studied the city ordinance on fireworks real closely. But your ordinance that you have set up specifically says on the very first line, no fireworks are to be discharged from the city roadway. And I'm here to ask you, is the middle of the intersection of Second Avenue and Third Street a public roadway?
Yeah.
Okay? So, we've agreed that that's a public roadway. So according to our, our, you know, our city ordinance, we cannot discharge from the city roadway, correct?
That's.
Cause that's what it says. All right? But they insisted they were legal because apparently one of my other neighbors, not myself, I looked out my bedroom window, which faces east, and I seen some of these fireworks bouncing off the top of my camper, and I go, well, that's a problem, you know, I could see a problem coming there. So that morning, I get up, I go on top of both of my campers, and I have lots of fireworks debris. That orange powder, that gray powder everywhere. I take a whole, I can't tell if I have damage enough, cause I have so much debris on top of my campers. I picked up handfuls of used fireworks and threw them back on the street, off of my property, onto the city street. So anyway, that being said, uh, I should have bagged it all, but I did not. I talked to my neighbor, he insisted that he was legal. Okay, that's fine. My next step was I called the Hazen Police Department, sent me straight to dispatch. It was about ten o'clock. Officer Wolf comes over about forty-five, and I said, it's an emergency, told him my name, address, I said, I have a fireworks complaint. He came, I had since, before he showed up, I have a hole in my boat tarp about the size of a silver dollar. Fireworks burnt a hole right through my boat tarp, then, then now I have a hole in it. Okay? I asked Officer Wolf, he videoed it, uh, he, I don't know, had, had a, had a video of it, he seen the fireworks on my roof. I made sure my neighbor seen that Officer Wolf was at my residence, cause he was out in his yard. So I wanted to make sure he knew that I had called the police department. It's about the size of a silver dollar. You know, it's not, we're not talking half the car burnt up, it's about the size of a silver dollar. And, so, I have damage now. I can't prove who did it, because I didn't see it till the next morning. But I am here to ask the city commission, are we done with aerial fireworks in Hazen, North Dakota, or are we gonna continue to do what we're doing? Because there's a lot of people annoyed with the fireworks policy that we have. Officer Wolf told me, well, you know, the city, we kinda look the other way, if nobody has any place to discharge fireworks. Okay, my answer to that is, if we don't have a place to discharge fireworks, perhaps we shouldn't be doing it. Okay? Cause if you think people are gonna do the right thing, you are mistaken. They are not gonna do the right thing. They're gonna do whatever they have money to do, okay? People don't care about their neighbors, they don't, they don't necessarily, you know. So, I asked my neighbor, is this it? Or are we gonna have a repeat performance the night of the fourth? He didn't answer me. All I did was shift the excitement a half a block east. So now they proceeded to shoot the fireworks right about the entrance to the alley a half a block east of me. So my neighbor on the other side of all of that was really upset the morning of the fifth. I said, well, that's funny, I said, I'm going up to the city office to get my name on the agenda, I said, you're more than welcome to come up for the meeting. Cause I said, I'll be there. Gentlemen, I think it's time. I really do, because if you look at the city map, I don't care, pick a city map behind you, it only takes one person to annoy ten, twelve city blocks with their fun that they're having. Okay? It only takes one night. And, so look at our city. Ten nightheads can cover our whole town with uncontrolled fireworks for, oh, till eleven o'clock, you know, the night of the second, and midnight the night of the third and the fourth. I know several people had to go to work the morning of the fifth. They didn't get any sleep until after twelve o'clock. Because that's when it's legal, you can only shoot it till twelve o'clock. Okay? It's time, gentlemen, it's time. I don't know if any of you enjoy shooting fireworks. That's none of my business, and I really don't care, that's your business. But I think it's time, gentlemen. I think it's time. Twenty years ago, this city used to do fireworks display. We used to put out fireworks display in our town. You know who lit them off? Our firemen. You know what? They had, they had their pants on, they had their jackets, they had their.
They were also commercial grade fireworks.
Well, I, I realize that. But the fireworks, twenty years ago, and the fireworks today are not the same fireworks, aren't they? This stuff goes up a hundred feet, a hundred twenty-five, I don't know, I'm just estimating, I don't know for sure. And it just explodes and it flies everywhere. Okay? Now, we used to have a zone safety around our fireworks display, three hundred feet, four hundred feet.
Once again, those are commercial fireworks.
Now, anybody with flip flops, shorts, and a tank top, and nothing over their eyes, can shoot off these fireworks.
Once again, they're commercial fireworks, the fire department sets off, completely different.
So.
All the shell we set off is a three inch shell, cause it's the smallest.
I have no idea what you can buy nowadays.
Niles, you need a special license to buy those.
That's funny. So, I'm gonna say, you love fireworks and you love setting them off, baby.
I'm on the fire department, so I don't.
Now, I think it's ironic that this town made bottle rockets illegal. They go pop, and they're done. And you can buy stuff with a three foot stick and a shell on the end of it that's strong enough to probably blow a couple fingers off your hand, and that's okay? Does anybody see how ironic this is? How crazy this seems to be? I don't know, I, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars in fireworks our residents buy, I don't know, I spend zero. Okay, but I think it's time, gentlemen. Because unless you really, you really need to live next door to somebody that really enjoys this stuff, to know how annoyed you can be by fireworks. Because, I thought, okay, now the fifth rolls around. They got there, a lot of their system, you know, like you only shoot it till eleven o'clock on the fifth. Well, you know what, about ten thirty, somebody on the other side, about a half a block, three quarter of a block, must have missed the fourth, they must have been out of town. And they shot their fireworks up to about just a minute or two after eleven o'clock. So it only takes one to annoy a large area of our city. And, I'm just asking, what's the recourse now? Oh, that's, that's too bad, you've got a hole in your boat tarp, you know, yeah, you know, stuff happens. It does, meteor swallowed out of the sky all the time. It could have been a meteor, I don't know. I don't think so. But I'm just saying, what are we supposed to do? Just keep putting up with it, is that okay? Is that right?
Well, did, how long ago was it, Monty, that we did change some of our timelines?
Twenty twenty-one's the last time I.
Twenty one, okay.
You shortened up the time, time frame, of selling them and, or the, they could shoot them off.
Okay.
So we had, we, I, I've been, I've been selling some stuff, Mr. Bor, and I, you know, I haven't spent a penny on it in a long time. When I was young, and shot bottle rockets at my brother's face with a little guns we made with them, yeah. But I. No, I'm not ready to shut them down in Hazen. I don't think that's, are they becoming bigger and louder? Yeah, absolutely they are. I couldn't sleep that night either, on the night of the third. And so I, I understand that part.
Yeah, you didn't sleep the night of the fourth either, because.
Well, I wasn't in town the night of the fourth, because I knew what was gonna happen the night of the fourth.
Sure.
And my neighbor who texted me at midnight, F this and F that, cause her dog can't make it through the night. I left town, cause I know what's, what it's like. People with PTSD, dogs, elderly, I have a lot of sympathy for all of that. Am I willing to take and shut it all down because of that? No, I'm not, I'm only one vote, maybe Casey, these guys would. The part about the street is getting bad, I noticed a couple by across from Mrs. Franson, that there was a lot of debris in the street over there. And if we got a rainstorm, that would have went all right to the.
Storm, to the.
Storm store, plugged up probably. But I, I'm sorry that that happened. Um, I don't know if you were happy or unhappy with Mr. Wolf when he came over, but.
Mr. Wolf can only enforce what the city has set up as ordinance.
And that's one of the other hard things, is to enforce it. When you have one police officer on duty.
Aye.
You can hear a shell or an over a Huber second from your house probably go off. You don't know where it's happening, you know, like, if it's in the streets, I, I, yes. And maybe we need to change the verbiage, but. I wouldn't wanna change anything that continues to make it unenforceable or harder to enforce.
Well, I got a question for you, because you specifically list in your city ordinance that no fireworks are to be discharged from any public property or any property that has a public building on it. Okay? That's what your ordinance says. So, if the city doesn't want it, why would I want it in my neighborhood, I guess? All right, if, if, if you don't want the liability or the risk to have it on public property, why would I want it? That's what, that's, that's my question for all of you.
Well, say if our neighbor right beside us decided to shoot them off, not in city hall property, but but Mr. Neiger just north of us, it has nothing to do with that, that's our neighbor, that's your, your neighbors.
Well, you do have a right of recourse to small claims court or something like that, I mean, you do have.
I have to prove it, I can't prove it, see? That's where everything just goes away, okay? Proof is still necessary, and I, I believe in that, okay? I can't prove, because that was the second comment my neighbor said, as, well, there was others, you were shooting off fireworks, I said, no. I, I didn't shoot off fireworks. He was mistaken, my neighbor behind me across the alleyway had shot some off, but they were done by quarter to eleven, you know? But this went on for an hour and a half. An hour and a half.
So you want us just to stop it, cold turkey, be done?
I want aerial fireworks to be done, is what I want. I could care less about firecrackers, I could care less about bottle rockets. They don't bother me.
Why are they aerial?
Well, I understand that. They're already illegal, so if you wanna add them in the list, by all means. I'm not against sparklers, I'm not against firecrackers, I'm not against any of that stuff. I'm against the stuff that people like, walk back over, grab their beer, hey, watch this. Okay, that's what I'm against. And it just goes and goes and goes. A lot of people don't see the need to clean up, you know, or they'll wait three days, four days to clean their mess, if they do at all.
I'm surprised your people swept the streets.
Well, his father did, he, the person that lit it didn't, but his father was out there, and that's who I had a visit with. And I guess a police officer had been with it, cause I'm sure, I got other neighbors that are even closer to the intersection there than I. Okay? But I had fireworks debris on my, on my roof, I mean, it sounded like they were going off. When your windows start to shake a little bit.
Yeah.
You don't know if World War III started, or if it's just the Fourth of July, gentlemen, I'm just saying.
Well, I, I did grow up, I had to clean out by eaves of my house, cause there's plenty of debris in, on my roof as well, and in the eaves.
Well, I, I'm not looking for sympathy, that's not what I'm looking for.
No, but you're not, you're not alone, I'm saying.
No, I, I know that, we all got to enjoy it. Mr. Oltenauer, the whole town enjoyed the Fourth of July, whether you want it or not. No, I, I heard people up at the manor, because they were shooting them off in the football parking lot, and, you know, there's a lot of people, elderly people that live in the patio home, they're, they live in the manor. Yeah, they, they were, they were using any place they could to shoot fireworks. And, like I said, if the city doesn't want fireworks on their property, why would I want the fireworks on my property?
I don't have nut following that.
Well. Life in the.
You're not allowing fireworks on your property, neither are we.
Yes, I know.
The streets.
But, exactly.
Okay.
So give people a place to shoot them.
And he's correct, I, I did see the bag, that I think, the bag.
Sure.
And orange guy on his roof. The only thing I disagree with him is he put it into his own words, that I said, we look the other way. I said, it's hard to enforce on the city streets.
I don't think it matters if they're in your street, or if they're in the, your neighbor's backyard.
Cause I just, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I just think it's, it's time, because fireworks, twenty-five years ago, aerial fireworks was, was not what aerial fireworks is today. I mean, it's much louder, oh, you get this great poof of bright light and this sparkly, pretty sparkles fly all over the place, and that's, that's true. But, uh, yeah. We're, people that have grown up in a place that fireworks were not allowed, shake their head, don't understand what's happening in Hazen, North Dakota, and I said, well, uh, welcome to Hazen, because that's how it is, how it's been for, since fireworks were invented. We've not really banned, you know, anything, size wise, it's, whatever they're, what they can sell in a, in a fireworks, this, you know, place, that's, you can buy it, you can discharge it, there's no, nothing to stop you. Except the time. That's the only thing. So, I guess my question is, do we keep letting people discharge fireworks wherever they want to, is, is that a, I mean, meaning a city street, because they, most people discharge them from the city street. I don't know too many people that haven't discharged them, cause most people don't have a yard big enough to discharge fireworks.
Good question, and maybe that's something we need to look at, if we need.
Because I would just assume.
Either take it out, or, like you said, he'd have to be sprinting all over town.
Absolutely.
Help people and not be in the.
I, I, I mean, it's in your ordinance, it's.
And we might have to take it out.
You know?
If it's unenforceable, we might have to remove it.
You know? It's disappointing, I think it should stay, because I think people, if, if you don't have, let's say the square footage to discharge large fireworks in your yard, perhaps you need to find somewhere that is big enough. I don't know where that is, not my problem. I don't know where that is. Not my problem. I don't shoot fireworks. That's somebody else's problem. Figure it's not my problem. I just wanted to take it somewhere else. I don't care if they go out to our asphalt pile out there or our 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 pea gravel pile or our whatever pile. Doesn't bother me. I don't care if they shoot them into the lagoon, although that's probably bad because I could plug something.
Probably more of them.
You know, but, uh, yeah. I don't think they bother anybody out there. I really don't. I I I don't know of anybody that would be disappointed if people had to discharge fireworks out there. I don't know. I don't know. But I'm just, like I said, I I I I just don't see any need to celebrate the fourth with the loudest and biggest stuff you can find. I don't know. And not have any place to shoot it. So let's just go off the middle of the intersection and shoot it off for an hour and a half.
Jim, do you have a comment?
This year we have had more fireworks bootlings than we ever had before. And a lot of people was complaining that they're about to shoot off too long, starting on the what he sells twenty seven seven or whatever. And, uh, I told them at all my offices, you know, well, it's hard to, you know, if you're selling something like glitter candy in front of a kid, don't eat it. This day, then it's a state law that they can start selling two days before they can shoot off. I don't know if the city can change that.
Of course.
But I'm just saying, this this is a complaint too getting too too long. The fourth is good enough. Maybe the fifth is good enough. Two days instead of all week or five days. That that's the amount of fun that we get. Like I said, we've been having more complaints issue with any other. I don't know if it's all the new people in town or
Mm hmm.
And with the street, it is really hard to enforce, like I said. Is, you know, we had dead cut of fires because people threw fireworks right away, right away. We burned the house down. We're close to it, so.
That's it last year. I, um, that's why a lot of them leave them all by the street.
Yeah.
Due to the fire because they'll light up days later.
Oh, I I I'm not. I'm not. I wasn't against people not cleaning up their mess immediately. That's not what I'm against. I'm against the mess in my yard that they're not gonna come in. I understand that. There's all there's liability with being on somebody else's property. Okay, I I get that. But when you shoot it twenty feet from somebody's property, do you have any expectation to where that's gonna go for sure? I'm guessing it's gonna go wherever it wants to go and it's gonna land on anybody's property. And I guess what I'm saying is, what I'm hearing is like that sucks for you to have somebody that loves the Fourth of July in your neighborhood because we're just gonna keep letting them shoot off whatever he wants, you know? I think eleven o'clock's plenty late enough. I realize we're way, way on the western edge of the central time zone. Unfortunately, it doesn't get dark here until about ten thirty on the Fourth of July. I understand that. You know what? If you could pack more into that half an hour and only shoot it for a half an hour and you'd only annoy your neighbor for a half an hour, not an hour and a half. I don't know. Know what the answer is? Anything, anything would be an improvement of what we have right now. That's all I'm saying. Less time, less time to sell them, less time to shoot them, less time in the evening. It's all would be a step in the right direction in my opinion. You wanna keep it, that's fine. I'm sorry, if you can't pack in what you bought in a half an hour, wow, I don't know. Maybe you gotta go somewhere else or you can shoot them till one or two o'clock in the morning. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, some people do.
It's a big deal for people. I understand. I I get that.
Yeah, very, very.
I mean, but there are a lot of people in this town that it annoys greatly and most of them are okay, they're not teenagers. All right, they're not twenty somethings. They're probably not even thirty somethings. But when you start getting into the fifties and sixties, you're gonna start annoying people on up from there. And I don't know, this town has a lot of people that are sixty or over. It's just a fact. So, yeah. Any one of those steps, less time selling them, less time shooting them, less days shooting them and less times in the evening to shoot them would all be because I wasn't necessarily annoyed on the second or the third, sorry, the second and the fifth. I was annoyed on the third and the fourth when they could shoot them till midnight. That's really when it wasn't like.
I I understand. I agree.
So.
I don't think reducing the timeframe of selling them in Hazen would matter. They can buy them a Buell, they can buy them a Bismarck, they can buy whatever they want.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. But, you know, I think that's something we could look at is possibly reducing the time, you know, in the evening or I don't know. Let's we'll see. I've heard from two people here this third. We have twenty five hundred people out here and I don't, may maybe we maybe we need to need your four people. I don't know. I'm not sure what the answer is. My answer to my neighbor's dog, well, take your dog out of town or medicate your dog. I'm sorry. But that's not always the answer, but that's what I gave her.
It's tough because you can't.
Because you know what's gonna happen.
Yeah. But do we have to let it happen? I guess that's the question.
To me, yes. I I I do wanna let it happen. Can we change the constraints maybe?
You know?
And we already have since we've I've been sitting at this table.
Yep.
So we we're not opposed to changing things, but.
But just ask the question. So if you ban them, where do you expect all these people that do like to shoot them off to go?
I don't know.
Do you have some land to donate for that?
I I personally don't.
Technically, they can't just go out in the county and shoot them off anywhere they want up there either.
No, that's true.
You know, you kind of prevent people from doing that.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't have a place to shoot them, maybe you shouldn't.
But, you know, I shoot them right off in my front yard. I mean, five foot off of the road isn't gonna really matter, you know, if I do it on the street or five foot onto my property.
Yeah. So you don't care where it flies either then?
I'm not saying I don't care where it flies. You know, where do you expect these people to go?
I don't know. Because if you don't have the spot, maybe you shouldn't be shooting fireworks.
Even like you said, going up to the crushed asphalt pile. Could you imagine all those people up there trying to light them off all at one time in an hour and a half? Maybe mass chaos up there. And there would be people, probably people getting hurt over it.
Yeah. It's possible. I I I don't. I I I'm sure it's possible.
You know, when you're talking annoyance, you know, Harleys driving around town annoying me. So should we ban Harleys?
I've never had a Harley drive around my neighborhood for an hour and a half.
It's possible. But they're all summer long, you know?
Um, I hear them, I guess, for three or four seconds when they go down Third Street because Third Street's kind of like Main Street.
Correct. But you do it. You do it all all summer long. Fireworks is a matter of a few days. You don't even know what's gonna happen on those few days.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm hearing then we should, if you don't like it, you should leave town, right? Is that what I'm hearing if if you don't?
That's what I did. I'm not saying that's what you need to do, but that's what I did.
I can't tell you to do, you know, you can do whatever you want to do. You know, if you got a problem with your neighbor, maybe go talk to him.
Hey, you know what? Great idea. I did that.
But how did you also, how did you talk to him?
I asked him.
If you're polite about it and go out there while he's doing it, might be a different thing than trying to confront him afterwards and being upset about it, you know? I don't know how you confront it.
And it was the next day because I I I wasn't, you know, real familiar with with the ordinance. Obviously, I read up on that after the fact, like on the morning of the fourth. Um, but, uh, I asked him, you know, I I I just, I I told him, well, I told his father who was out there sweeping the street up that it was just too, it was too long, it was too loud, and it was too close. That's what I said.
I'm gonna stop the conversation. Now we're just repeating ourselves.
Right.
But I don't, you guys all, Casey, go ahead. This is my comment. And even though I think it's a great idea because how we heat out a spot, you know? You know, even though there are then like parts in town that are then like smaller and smaller and like tighter, you know, I mean, I mean, maybe then do I guess we just make a limit, you know, you know, on the grain. Put it on a grain, on a grand size, you know? How do you, how do you, how do you police that though? How do you know that? I I'm not sneaking in a big one. I know it'd be hard to.
Yeah, there's.
It'd be hard to force, but then, you know, maybe then it would slow down some of it, you know? Okay. Well, so Monty gave us all a copy of ordinance. But I'd like to see everybody for the next meeting to look at the ordinance. If you see something that you think we could tweak, if we go from the third and fourth until eleven thirty instead of twelve o'clock, you know, we reduce the days it's being sold. Kind of sales tax Monty, do we make on fireworks sales, you think? So not a not a big deal. So if we reduced it one day. Um, let's let's take a look at it for at the next meeting. Uh, Monty put it on the agenda under old business and if if there is something you want to bring up, a proposal to change or amend our ordinance, let's let's bring it up, bring back that that'll run my mark to it. Okay? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, moving on to seven A. Procurement ordinance revision. Monty?
Well, we've discussed it several times over the last few years on the fact that department heads are kind of limited on some of their stuff by the one thousand dollar limit without board approval, the way things are costing nowadays. I mean, a couple cutting it even near at the thousand dollars. So just brought it to your attention that, and as I said in the notes, I mentioned it to the president that now where he was thinking two thousand would be a more realistic number for those things. Obviously, they still have to be approved by the board, but
Right.
because it's any procurement has to be approved by the board eventually. So before payment is made.
And really, the only two people that that would probably involve would be Dave and Jim, right? That'd be about the
For the most part, yeah. You 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 could always have uh, an instance where something is missing.
Sure.
You know, and maybe equipment and stuff like that too. So.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Like the library.
No. It's a lot of orderings.
She buys a lot of books, but not in.
I would I would like to see that. I would like to see that this amount changed from a thousand to either fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars. I don't think we've not had an issue with people abusing this, you know, if something pops up and Dave has a cylinder break or something happens, basically talks to Monty right away or Jason and, you know, we
Not many emergencies are.
Yeah, absolutely. If it's snowing, we need a cylinder or something, we gotta get to take care of it obviously, but or whatever, but I would like to see this amount increased.
How many promotion to go with the two thousand dollars?
Motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. So the way that I read that, does that department head then needs to say it's okay? Is that right, Stern?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Need word session. Rokal.
Weidrich. Aye. Stern.
Aye.
Fokert.
Aye.
Fomanov.
Aye, motion carried.
This will serve as your first reading since it is an ordinance.
Ah, gotcha.
I was just thinking.
Well, Mark could be honest about that.
You weren't done yet.
All right, so we'll have this back at the next meeting for a second meeting. Water service and water meter revision.
Again, as I indicated in the notes, as Jared was going through some of these things with the new meters, there were some questions as to ultimate ownership and who's responsible for them. So he looked at some of the ordinances that are out there and the one that he really liked was the fact that water meter is the property of the city of Hazen. Where did I put it?
And if the homeowner uses it or brings it out or responds.
The meter malfunctions because of just malfunction, then the city is responsible. But any any damage or anything like that.
Such as unless it freezes and breaks or if they try to remove it or circumvent it somehow.
And then the other thing was the fact that we really don't have any five eighths inch meters anymore. Everything we're doing now with the replacement is three quarter. And he said, there really isn't a compound meter anymore. All new meters are basically just reading low and high full length. So there is no compound meters. He thought it would make sense to take that out as we're changing these out. What's in the first paragraph? The water meter and the reading equipment remain the ownership of the city. Because there have been some questions about, well, if I bought the meter, why do I have to?
I was just curious, you know, you know, you know, the old meter now. You have the property now of the
That's
of the owner of the house.
That's the other property now, yeah.
The city.
Does everybody get to keep their old meter? I say no, but.
Okay. So does anybody have any problems with these changes with the size and only the homeowner responsible for replacement cost? You have damaged? Casey?
Move to approve, I guess.
Okay, that's John there. If motion by Stern to approve the edited changes.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Rokal.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fokert.
Aye.
Fomanov.
Aye, motion carried.
And again, first reading.
Thank you. Let's see, you get next one. Reports, water sewer and garbage. So I guess we got a spot open, I guess, on the water or for the garbage crew and the street crew. I can't find them. I leave, so. And Monty's gonna put that in the paper and we had someone apply last week or?
Yeah, we we did post it in the paper and I did actually get two applications within the last week. So we'll be working at those.
Okay. For, I know at the CBB meeting last week, um, what was the gal buster that came in? And it was, uh, Sarah. Yes.
Oh, what?
Yeah, she was gonna contact you, Monty. She's got a brother, a brother along with the town that's interested in one of those positions too, so. Okay. Any else, Casey? No?
Oh, yeah.
All right, Jason's not here for streets. Uh, Dave?
We don't really have anything.
Mr. Fokert, finance, passing the library.
Uh, met with, was able to meet with the library last week and yeah, or said this week, no, last week, my days are messed up. And met with Monty, went over some finance stuff. Um, Monty said that there's gonna be a three percent cost. Um, Monty said that there's gonna be a three percent cost of living rates across the board for the city, and insurance is going up four and a half percent. Anything else to add to that, too?
And, and I gave you preliminary budget numbers that I entered today, so we'll look at them, and then we'll discuss them August fifth, I believe, is...
I wish for that, I still have to, you know, with busing and track hands that down, wherever the heck that she's at, she's in a whole good place, so, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weidrich, please fire Forest Street.
We're under reports for the fire department for the last month. I don't understand this one, where it said adjust stuck on roof. Well, we have...
That was an adjustment.
Just a...
Oh, adjuster.
I don't remember that one going on.
She got a panic attack, and Jesse and I...
Chief and I, uh, we sold the property.
That's it, the last insurance adjustment, yeah. Off the roof. Uh, we had a motor vehicle accident on County twenty, uh, by Zapp. We had to lift the sixth on Sixth Avenue. Same day we had to lift the sixth on Third Street. A motor vehicle accident on Highway two-hundred and forty-nine. We had a grass fire at Whitmeyer Bay, and a deck fire in town.
Deck fires on the...
Yeah, was...
Hope is their own fireworks, their own deck.
Was not.
Alright.
So, um, we did get the, uh, quote for tree removal. I don't remember where this one was at.
It is on Main Street.
Oh, um, I, uh, I thought it was, yes, yeah.
Obviously signs of Dutchelen disease. And it is a little bit beyond our capability.
Said we got a thousand dollar bid for that, so I'll make a motion to award that contract to E. For Seven Arrows Tree Service.
And motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Fokerts, discussion. So is that gonna be then, even all those trees, like you said in the photo, or just like one of those?
We had the bid for one from Seven Arrows to take down, and when I, uh, toured the town or took to State Forester, and I told them this tree was scheduled to be taken down. She was looking at it, and she said, get going right next to it, and try to stop it there. The other ones are still looking pretty good, but I'm sure within a year or two, they'll probably get it, but they might buy them some more time. We had these two diseased ones out. Hey, well, is it another tree about the same size? Yeah, and they're, they're intertwined between each other, and it's, make it just easier to get them all.
You already got the cord on that other one.
Oh.
We already set the cord for the other one, it's just this one had to be out.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Never mind.
Gotcha.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, do we have a second?
Yes. Mr. Fokerts.
Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fokerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Holmanoff.
Aye, motion carried.
Um, Dave did go around with the, uh, State Forester, identified some other trees that they're gonna keep an eye on. Hopefully, um, did he point out any other ones that...
Yeah, she pointed out a couple that we're gonna have to get down, probably this summer, yet for, for its fall, Dutchelen. And pointed out some other ones just for me to watch. Looked at a couple of her species, there was a few other trees that are having some issues, too. That was pretty informative for me to do that.
We have had lots of people asking about boulder trees since we haven't had a forester in a while. Several years, you know? Uh, Monty's been kinda looking into it, and Bismarck does a cost-sharing type program. Granted, theirs gets funded by business donations, which I don't know that we can do that. We already asked a lot of our businesses, and I hate to ask more of our businesses in town. But we do have money in our, we do have a line item for tree replacement every year. So I'd kinda like to put something together along the same lines where they could go talk to Galen, you know, possibly even have Galen plant it for him, as long as it's on our approved list, and then they can come in and get a reimbursement up to so much. Um, might be a little bit more work from either Dave or Monty to make sure it was actually planted, and we're not just handing out free money, you know? But, at least we'd be getting those trees replaced. I know some of them, we need for a couple of years to get their boulder trees replaced.
Dave?
I guess what I'd like to add is having the homeowners have a little investment in these trees might help. I've already taken out ten boulder trees out, uh, my fairly good planet. That homeowners have taken care of, and I've died. I probably got another half a dozen to build. So if they got a little, something invested there, they'd probably be more willing to water them and take care of them.
I agree.
The Mercy County Water Resource Board also has a history of providing some cost share with the cities. Um, that, about every three years, Bula comes over and asks the Water Resource Board for, I think it's five thousand dollars. I hope you know that, but, um...
We have no concept.
Yeah, we wouldn't be afraid to have your forester request some of that.
That's Monty and Dave.
Something we're looking into, and we'd like to get that put in place to her before, too late.
State Forester said she would help maybe draft something, or write some examples of what some other communities have set up or whatever.
Cause if a tree, if a boulder tree dies, how do we know that that property owner did not water it? We don't know that.
Yeah. Well, this way, instead of, Mike was just replacing them as we cut down, some of them, the homeowners didn't even want there, they, a couple of them did contact, but they didn't want them replaced. But Mike replaced them because they were moved on there. But these people would be coming to us, so obviously, they want, you know? They're gonna be more out to take care of our...
I, I think it's a good idea.
And we did look at a few trees that looked a little tougher stressed, and, you know, some homeowners are a little aggressive on it, or weed spray or whatever, and young trees, and certain species of trees are susceptible to these weed killers and that type stuff, or does, or a hormone. Some of them will probably die just because of that weed lack of damage.
Okay, well, if you get some stuff from the forester, State Forester?
Great.
Let's do it, that'd be great.
Uh, I think that's all I got on the forestry today for now. You have anything else, Dave?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, um, I have nothing on the police side, do you have anything to you for?
We just had a, we, we dad help, AB help, it's a mental health initiative. Doesn't cost us anything. When we can, uh, give, offer a mental health, we can have twenty-four-seven direct contact with the nurse, the counselor, and everything else, instead of having to make, do an assessment on the spot, and can tell us what, yeah, she needs to go to the hospital, and hopefully that would save the council and the transport, so we don't have to do it.
Does it like tell the health, is it like FaceTime, or?
Yeah, we've, it was, they got a pad and everything free, during...
You're talking for like, like emergency pedal stuff, or?
Just if, you, you, uh, you know, we get it all, I know my ex is sending me crazy texts.
Yeah.
Then he's gonna commit suicide, and then you go, I'm not doing that. But if he's wanting, he's willing to talk to somebody, then we have a counselor, and a nurse, and a nurse physician. And, well, family practitioner, odd that they acknowledge this meeting, and then we, we won't have to, uh, make the decision on our own.
No cost to the department or the city?
Department or the city.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah. So, we gotta try it out, see what happens. I mean, we don't have that many mental health. Being a smart community, we know who needs to go and who doesn't need to go. This, this one, we have some backing to.
As far as they didn't contact the county?
They really haven't, it just hasn't been long to get, but...
Unless you see a problem with the mark, I...
No, if anything, I think it's a, it'll be a help, cause I know I get a lot of the defense work on the mental health cases, and, uh, if you can get a little bit more backing, I think that'll save a lot of trips to Bismarck potentially, and um, mental health cases tend to be the cases where you don't really hear much, you don't really hear much until you all of a sudden hear a lot. And then, it, the quicker you can respond to it, it seems like the more likely that you get long-term results, where the people were, you're, they're kinda hanging up in limbo. It takes, takes them a long time to hit rock bottom, but then it takes even further for them to actually recover. So, if this provides something that provides more immediate response, I'm all for it.
Good. Maybe a second half of that, if we have an officer that has a burnout, or stress, or depressed, you know, of bad scene, or notice such as a degree fee, but they can, you know, instead of turning it to alcohol or whatever, you can contact them.
Or worse.
And everything's confidential, so I won't have access to SANS, twenty's of A G, if it happened to have a mental health, unless I need to step in and want me to, cause it all goes through individual emails of what, and they print out a sheet of what was talked about, and all that, so we have that.
Okay. Good, yeah. Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Buster?
Uh, not too much, other than the fact that, uh, next Tuesday will be my last ACD meeting. And so, I've been prepped for that. I did put together a preliminary budget for ACD, which of course you guys always take a look at, you know, which hopefully will help them out relative to whoever they have, uh, who's gonna be replacing me. I understand that they have visited with a, a number of people, local people. Uh, but I really don't know who, I, I've been kind of really out of the, out of the loop, to be honest with you. Uh, I understand that there's probably gonna be an ad in the paper this week for my, for the position. Uh, and, uh, so from there, I did, uh, visited with them about the fact that I helped transition a new person. So, and, and of course, that's all gonna depend upon who the replacement is, you know? Somebody might be able to come in and just fly, like I did. Or somebody might come in and be lost, like, whatever, I don't know, so... But that's all, that's basically all I have.
Buster, are you, is, uh, are you guys looking at selling the Commerce Center?
Yep, well, I shouldn't say that. We ventured, we asked for requests and proposals for bids, uh, for the sale of that, and so, uh, you know, we published that two weeks, we didn't have any takers. So we just went and reached out to a, um, related agency, and they're gonna be here, uh, next Tuesday to present to us, to see what, uh, we'll see what their proposal is.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Nothing under ten, eleven, or twelve? Take it down to thirteen for public comments. Think we had enough? Approval of bills, financial statements.
Motion to approve bills is presented.
Motion by Weidrich, second. Second by Fokerts. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fokerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Holmanoff.
Aye, motion carried. Me, Weidrich? Thank you.